We go ahead and call the first part of the meeting to order. We have a public hearing that we'll go through first before we call our regular council meeting to order. So, the public hearing is on a piece of property out on County Road 42 that is zoned R1. And people that only have asked it to be, for it to be rezoned to RMH, which is a mobile home park district. So, we're going to hear from the public that's here tonight, but I'm going to have to limit you to three minutes, person, because, you know, we can't stay here all night. So, you can either appoint you a spokesperson or limit the amount of time that you speak. So, who wants to go first, I guess, or is there someone here that wants to speak?
I will. We have eighty-two acres that will connect right to it, and we are against it. We do not want it, what it'll do to the value of our property. So, there's no other than the decision to be against it.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here on the other side that wants it changed? That wants to speak?
I would say yes.
This will come up in our regular council meeting and we won't vote on it at this time until we get into our regular meeting. But if there's no one else that wants to speak, we'll go right into our council meeting. This time, I called the meeting to order, and I welcome all of the guests. And we're happy to have our Girl Scouts with us. They're going to do our pledge tonight. I attended along with Scotty a hundred-year celebration for the Girl Scouts just a few weeks ago and found out some information that I didn't know, and I'll share it with you. Daisy Lowe organized the first Girl Scout troop on March the 12th, 1912. And the first group was of eighteen girls, and it was formed in Savannah, Georgia. Lowe was so dedicated to the Girl Scouts that she sold a strand of pearls to raise money for this Girl Scout beginning. Girl scouting has grown in one hundred years from eighteen girls to three point two million girls nationwide. We're so happy to have you girls here with us tonight. And I want to say you can be whatever you decide you want to be, as long as you have faith in God and you try to do what's right, and I know that's what you do. We're just hanging here tonight, so we're ready for you to do your pledge. Everybody stand.
On honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live like the Girl Scout want.
Thank you so much. We have our minister from the United Methodist Church here with us tonight, Nika Libere, the pastor for the members, Dee Dee Williams.
Let's pray. Grace to God and Father, as we come before you, come to grace. We just pause to give you honor and give you glory. And Father, we come and ask for your presence tonight. Decisions are made that will affect this city, Lord, now and in the future. Father, we lift up Bobby Holiday and ask you to continue to touch him. We pray, Lord, for those who will be taking office tonight, who will be stepping up to take a leadership position, that you'll bless them and the rest of this council, Lord, as they do the business of the city. Father, we pray for the city. We pray for prosperity. We pray for the industry. We pray for the businesses. We pray for the churches. We pray for the schools and ask you to bless each one. Lord, for our police department, our firefighters, and our EMTs, Lord, that each one that has a part in the business of the city and the well-being of the city would just be blessed and protected. And Father, we pray for them. Again, you would just be in our hearts and be in our lives and guide us in all that we do. And may you receive glory and honor in the name of Jesus. Amen.
By the ordinances of the City of Hamilton.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
Well, this has been an unliving experience for me. I'll say a few words before we go any further. Nobody expected our mayor, Cal Stroh. Nobody knew if Cal Stroh could be in the shape he's in. But it was my idea, as Mayor Protem stepped in and fell in. And I've done the very best job I knew how to do. I'm learning every day. So, don't let anybody tell you you get too old to learn, coach down. But now, sometimes it's a little harder. But I will do a good job for the best of my ability. At this time, since I've been elected as mayor, we need to elect a Mayor Protem, someone that can fill in for me when I'm not able to fill in the meetings. Do I have a recommendation for the Mayor Protem?
I recommend Scotty.
Scotty. Do I have a second? All in favor?
No.
No? All right, we have one up. At this time, we won't have to swear him in because he's not really getting a raise. He's going to be doing his sign right. At this time, we will need to elect a council member to take my place. And do I hear a motion for a person to be appointed as a council member?
I make a motion, I'm ready. On this night.
I have a motion on the table to appoint Francis Snapp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Ah.
Judge Howell will come up and administer my overall plan.
All my family's down here, so I'm just here. Do you need to use my battle?
Bless you if you do it.
Yes. Prayer, do you want me to?
Ah, that's fine. I think we bought a Bible.
I'm in heaven.
I repeat after me. I solemnly swear at my pardon.
I solemnly swear at my pardon.
That I am eligible for the office of council member.
That I am eligible for the office of council member.
And will execute the duties of the sign.
The duties of the sign.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Alabama.
And will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Alabama.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe all provisions.
Of the ordinances of the City of Hamilton.
And all the ordinances of the City of Hamilton.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the council. As a council.
meeting. Do I have a moment? Scotty, do I have a second? All in favor? Any notes? Recommendation to approve the council payable bills. I think we didn't get that finished. I thought we needed to table that. We will need to pay the bill. There's three of us that goes through and approves them before we bring them to the council. If, if the council desires, we'll go through them tomorrow and try to approve them, but if there's something that we don't want to approve, we'll bring it back to the next meeting. Is that suitable? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Francis, all in favor? Due to our mayor's illness, he's our representative on the gas board, and he's not been able to attend a meeting now, I guess, three or four months. So, item number eight is a recommendation to remove Joseph Robert Holiday from Northwest Alabama gas district. I did talk to Jeri Self today, and I asked him if he was receiving any compensation for being on that board, and he smiled. He said he would have to be able to go to the meetings to be paid, so, you know, it's not, we're trying to take anything away from him while I'm carrying. So, do I have a motion that we remove the former mayor from the gas board? Do I have a second? All in favor? I have any notes on that? And we need to fill some slots on the Police Review Committee. We have Thor, whose term expired, and Ms. Francis was one of them. In Ms. Francis's place, we are putting Tommy Croft on the board, and he will serve till four or five, 2016. And Scott Tyra is serving, whose place is he taking?
Scott Holcomb.
Yeah, Tim Holcomb. And his term will expire four or five, 2015. And Amy Clay is replacing Dee Dee Walker, and her term will expire four or five, 2014. Do I have a motion to put these people on, if this is predicted?
I'll make that one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scotty, all in favor? I have a recommendation to reappoint Alan Weiss. He was, his term was expiring as well, but he's agreed to stay on. So, I recommend that we reappoint him. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Scotty, all in favor? We had, probably access, or we've owned the Roswell property since, well, going on eight years, I guess, and it's continuing to deteriorate. And we cannot go in there and do any work on it, fix it up, or tear it down, or whatever that we might want to do. And right now, we don't know what we're going to do. We're getting some paper coming in and looking at it back this week and tell us if it's salvageable. And we do need to get some environmental testing done. We have to have that done before we tear it down or remodel it. So, we got some estimates on what it would cost to get that done. And this is just to pay somebody to go in there and pull samples and test and see if we got any environmental issues. And if we have, what we'll have to do to clean it up. So, do I have a motion for us to go ahead and hire Goodwin Mills and Cable to do our testing?
And is that for the building and the ponds?
It's, it's the building and the ponds, I understand, yes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Scotty, do I have a second? All in favor? We had some storm damage last year, and our Recreation Center, we're just now getting around to doing the repair work. And we have an insurance check for $25,000, and we're getting estimates. Now, we think we'll be able to get the work done for that. So, I'm just asking for a recommendation to approve the insurance money that we got to be spent back on Recreation Center, put up lights and poles and roofs and everything that was destroyed in the storm. So, do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
May David, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? We got some money from the gas company that, we've been spending insurance money because we had a fire at the rec center, I mean, it's down at the street department. Now, we've had this storm at the rec center, and we had to put a roof here because of hail. So, we've been spending money, but insurance has really paid some big claims around here lately. But we did get some money from the gas company for the first time, probably in six years. And we needed a truck really bad, a dump truck for the water department. And we were able to find one at the state surplus store for $12,108. Do I have a motion to approve that purchase?
I'll make that motion.
All, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scotty, all in favor? I have a laptop computer to go into mayor's office. I can do a lot of things if I've got my computer there. Don't have to ask Shane, Jan to do something for me, get my emails and all that. So, I would like for the council to approve a laptop computer for me at a cost not to exceed $600. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Scotty, do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor? At this time, we've got Marla Minter with us, and she would like to give us a chamber report.
Thank you. I know we're on limited time tonight, so I'm just going to go straight into it. And my voice is not the best in the world tonight, so if there's anything that you miss and the information is not clear as I speak tonight, disinformation is available on our chamber website that we have been updating and working on, and it's happening through chamberofcommerce.org. We have several big events coming up in the next month, and we wanted to go ahead, even though a couple of them are what most people would characterize as chamber events, most of these events are for the general public to attend, and we'd like to encourage everyone that would like to come and attend. The first one is April 10th, and that's just coming a week from tomorrow night. It is our annual chamber meeting, and it's going to be held at First Baptist Church at 6:00 PM. And our speaker this year is Mr. John Coyle of Big Oak Boys and Girls Ranch. And this is a ticketed event for chamber members. And one of the things that we want to do is encourage people to join the chamber and be a part of the chamber. This is the type of event that we are wanting to bring into our community throughout the year. So, if you're interested in joining the chamber again, you can hit the website or contact me or our officers. April 13th and 14th, the chamber and the Arts Council will be co-hosting our third installment of the Weekend Photo Shoot with John Durshe. And we started this a couple of years ago, actually, as a way for our businesses to help develop better photography skills for promotional materials for their businesses, websites, advertising, that type of thing. And it has been a big success. And again, this is our, this is our third seminar, and you do not previously have had to attend in order to come and be a part of this, and there is no charge to attend. And this is open to anyone. You don't have to be a member of the chamber, you don't have to be a member of the Arts Council. This is open to anyone in the community, do not even have to be from Hamilton. So, if you're interested in participating and attending, just give us a call and let us know. Then we get to the first week in May, and it's going to be a busy, it's going to be a busy week in Hamilton. Thursday, May 3rd, at 12:00 noon here at City Hall, we are going to recognize the National Day of Prayer, and we would like to invite everyone from the community. We will have pastors and church leaders from throughout the community here and in attendance and sharing inspirational messages and prayer for not only our, our area, but our entire On Friday, May the 4th, we are going to be hosting, we're going to be a host site for the Chick-fil-A Leader Cast. This is a national event, actually, it's a worldwide event, that is going to be simulcast from Atlanta, and there will be only 125,000 people attending this conference. And when our chamber board met after elections in late December, early January, one of the things that we discussed was what type seminars do we want to have, what type workshops to better our community, to better the leadership in our community. And we all felt strongly when we were presented with the opportunity to be a, a host site for this event. This, this event basically is dealing with perfecting, or not perfecting, but to help, to grow the leaders in our community. And again, this is something, to attend the conference in Atlanta is between $200 and $400. And if you attend here, it's $59.95, and that includes your lunch. And for those who need continuing education credits, you can get up to five and a quarter credits if you attend that day. So, that is being hosted again. That is on Friday, May the 4th, beginning at 8:00 AM, and the host site is the Ramp Conference Center. And again, some of the speakers that will be included in the program are Solidad O'Brien, Tim Tebow, John Maxwell, and Urban Meyer. So, you know, we encourage everyone to take advantage of having such a wonderful business opportunity as is in our community. We're one of the few host sites in Northwest Alabama. There's not even a host site in Tupelo, Mississippi. So, we're marketing both Northwest Alabama and Northeast Mississippi. And again, this is what we want to bring as a chamber board, and as a chamber, we want to bring this in and give the opportunity for our, our business people and just, and this would be a great calling for business, but for churches, anyone that's in any type of leadership position, this would be a wonderful opportunity to attend. And then on Saturday, May the 5th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, it's the Third Annual Customer Appreciation Day. Even though the majority of the events will be held in downtown, all of our merchants throughout the community are sponsoring and holding special sales that day. So, this is something, we will have bands, going to have kids area, I think some antique cars are coming in. So, this is, they're going to be having also, this is a big thing, over $1,400 in Hamilton bucks that they will be giving away that day throughout the day. So, we, like I said, we've got a lot coming up, and we felt it was important to come to the council tonight and to publicly invite people to come and attend these events and to make y'all aware of some of the things that we are working on as a chamber for our community. Any questions?
Thank you, Marla. Y'all are working hard. This is one of our volunteer open sessions for Friday. Okay, this time, Karen, you're going to give us a proposal to your round's arts festival. Here about...
I wanted to say a special thanks to the City Council on its work and financial support and services. We, our art festival drew over 2,500 people with seven artists from eight states, which included Florida and Colorado. We also wanted to thank Jeep Conners and staff because they control the traffic, and you know, that's a big thing, that number of people. The street department did for their services before and after the festival. And Karen Witten Ministries Ramp volunteers that did the traffic and parking responsibilities, which was over 15 hours, and everything's all volunteer. Our corporate sponsors and volunteers have made this festival possible. And the Marion County Commission for the Use of the Airport Hangar and Maintenance of the Ground, which made it wonderful to have that event there. We were honored to be recognized by the Atlanta Journal-Constitution Newspaper, AAA Alabama Journey Magazine, and Sweet Home Alabama Magazine, which described the festival as "high-quality and diverse, expressing uniqueness of artists and their talents and skills." And we just thought this was a great thing for our city, and we're looking forward to next year for continuous growth, for it to even be bigger and better. But we can't do it ourselves, and we want to thank all the support that we have to make this a successful event.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you. What a good event. Very good. At this time, item number 17 is a recommendation for immediate consideration of our ordinance number 20127. That is the rezoning that we discussed at the birth of the meeting. I'll read this to you. The Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended, and I'll skip some of that. Empowers the City of Hamilton to enact the Hamilton Zoming Ordinance and provide for its administration enforcement amendment for the purpose of promoting the health and general welfare. And whereas the purpose amendment, proposed amendment is reasonable with consideration, among other factors, to the character of the district and its particular suitability for particular uses, and with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of the lands through such municipality, and therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Hamilton, Alabama, that the property located on County Road 42, further identified as parcel number, and I'll skip that, Marion County, is hereby rezoned from R1 to RMH1. What I'm asking for now is immediate consideration for that ordinance. We're not approving the ordinance on item 17. Do I have a motion for immediate consideration?
Well, I mean, you know, just coming out quite frankly, I'd like to get more information with this issue. I want to be as fair as I can to all parties involved and decision you and me. I know that you're anxious to hear a decision made in this, but I can't, I can't vote on something that I'm not really familiar with, so if you'll forgive me, I, I'd like to just table this and make a deal at the next meeting so that I can inquire about it and educate myself a little further before I do make this decision.
So, Francis has made a motion to table. Do I have a... Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Without unanimous consent, we can't vote on it tonight, but we'll try to get together, and, and this will be on the agenda next council meeting. Do y'all think that's reasonable to say we can vote on it the next time? That'd be, yeah, we would. Item number nineteen says, "Recommendation to approve an estimate of six thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars from Carl Parker for concrete work, for construct in a parking lot behind the city hall." We've been talking about this for a while, and, um, we're ready to do it, but we want to do a curbing before we start work on the, uh, parking. So, uh, this is the only estimate we got. We asked people to come in and give us estimates, and, uh, after talking with some of the council people and them looking it over, they felt like it was a very reasonable estimate. So, at this time, I would ask for a motion to approve this, uh, amount to get Carl Parker starting to work on our parking lot.
I'll make that motion.
April, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Ms. Tyler, I know you need to have a few words to say, and you see how long our meeting's going, so...
It probably wouldn't take me three minutes to say all I want to say, but, uh, I believe you've addressed the title, mayor, uh, and council. The previous mayor, of course, is not in our presence, but I want to give him recognition of all this city council for passion and work that would protect our armed forces families should there be a loss of life. I thank the mayor by half, also Ed Miller here, post commander in ninety-one, uh, continues to work hard on the issue. Uh, the other, and he had a part in it, is the historical home practice of, uh, Hamilton and Sullings. And, uh, the people appreciate the council for helping us preserve a historical landmark. And, uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention just briefly, I think it's a last resort, and I know you're gonna go through the procedures to determine what the cost feasibility would be to revamp, tear down, or what have you, the old lizenware building. And I will say this, that one piece of real estate is what Marion County has been talking about in the civic center. And if it can be preserved in any way, I recommend that they preserve. And I thank the people that long remember the council and the mayor for doing so. And if, if it's one of these situations where you've just got to do something, I believe it's within your power to put this off until the next administration. Might be the same council, might be the same mayor, I don't know. But, uh, that one piece of real estate there is, uh, a demolition special stream. And I dare say the cost of doing away with the building would come close to paying for the repairs or do that thing in sections. In other words, a little at a time. I think this.
Your weapons. We appreciate your comments, Ty Tyler, but actually, uh, it won't cost to tear down. The, the scrap would pay to have it torn down, we already know that. But we're still looking at that.
But we can use that scrap.
When we, you know, if there's something that can be salvaged, yes.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to tear down landmarks or anything, you know. We want to do what we need to do for the best of everybody.
But that thing, uh, cut house, just like these young ladies got up and spoke, that represent the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. And I can go on and on. Even the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scout, that one piece of real estate is worth some money to this community.
We agree.
I think.
With the building.
I know there's forty-seven, aren't there?
Forty.
Forty is thirty.
Scott, forty, forty.
Shane's already slipped out, I mean, I mean, thank her. She's worked all day, you know, and now trying to get together some refreshments. So, uh, before we go out and have some refreshments, Shane, thank you so much. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to say a word or two? We appreciate you all coming, and at this time, uh, okay, Scotty, second? All in favor? Thank you so much. Let me move on.